The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
Okay, I'll call a special board meeting to order and first we'll go, we'll take roll call Sandy.
Maloney.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Sitnikoff.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Brandon Hugel.
Here.
Becker.
He's coming, I think.
There he is.
And Warren.
He's here. Oh, there he is. And here, yeah, Andrew just arrived.
Okay.
All right, so next I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session Christina.
Sure. I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five consider or nineteen point five one C considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties investigating of public funds or conducting other specified this public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session more specifically to it review and consideration of terms and provisions of the current superintendent's contract in pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties the investigating of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session more specifically to it potential property acquisition the board may return to open session to devote on items discussed in closed session.
Second. All right Sandy.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Brandon Hugel.
Aye.
Sitnikoff.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Sheldon.
Aye.
Carried seven zero, so at this time you all have an invitation on your calendar invite to go into the Google Hangout which is where we will conduct the closed session, so we'll see you back at six o'clock Josh.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we just come out of closed session and I'll ask Christina to read the motion to go back into open session.
Sure, thanks Brenda, I moved that the board reconvene in open session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five two Wisconsin statute to consider the balance of the special board meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy.
McCoy.
Aye.
Sheldon.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Sitnikoff.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Brandon Hugel.
Aye.
All right, all, all seven board members are present, we're also joined in our meeting by Luke Pazani who is the president of our intercity student council and Anna Statts from, and both of them are from Southwest High School. We also are joined by, as anyone who's watching can see, members of the superintendent's cabinet and our board secretary Sandy Heller and of course our superintendent Dr. Michelle Langenfeld. I'd, I'd actually like to, to start before we get to suspending the rules, the next agenda item, I just, I just want to, and I'm sure I speak for the board as a whole, but just give a huge thank you to all of people in our district that are, have been working so incredibly hard and I know they're working, they probably never thought they could work this hard. And I am so grateful that they've been able to do as much as they have, I know that we've, we've worked really hard to get computers to kids, we're still working on that, but we have, how many computers out Michelle? You told me today, I forgot.
We went up, I think.
Oh Josh, yeah.
Yep. Eight hundred and fifty as of, as of today and about a hundred and twenty Kajits.
Okay.
And that, that's just since the closure.
Oh, okay, that doesn't include everybody that took theirs home.
That's, yeah, that's right, we have probably about nine thousand computers at home right now.
Yeah, okay, and, and in, in, Melissa Thiel-Koller has a really great quote at the bottom of her email, she said she got it from West appears, it's a really good one and I'd just like to read it before we start. It says, "School is not closed, the buildings are, if you listen closely you can hear the hum of hardworking teachers administrators and support staff preparing to save the day in ways and means never seen before, yes, we are brokenhearted, but these broken hearts will lead." And I think that really speaks very well to what I've witnessed these last few weeks in terms of the outpouring of ideas and support and people working and, and just lots of really good things going on, so just a huge thank you to everybody. And then also for people that are watching us, watching us live or at any point actually, if you'd like to see the, the handouts and, and agendas for our meetings, you can go to our website at GBA PS dot org and click our district at the top and on the left you'll see Board of Education, if you click Board of Education under that will be a link called Addenda's Handouts and Minutes, if you click that, that will take you to our board meeting where all of our handouts and meeting, meeting minutes are stored and they're stored for all, all of our meetings, today's meeting and meetings in the past. The next is, is a motion to, sorry, here we go, I'd entertain a motion to undersuspend the rules to suspend in-person public appearances. So moved. Um, hang on, uh, okay, is there a second?
Second.
I did second.
Oh, sorry Katie.
Three seconds.
Three seconds.
That's right.
Um, and then, is there any discussion? Trying to find my meeting back.
Actually Brenda?
Yes.
That suspension of rules I think was in the teaching and learning agenda.
Oh shoot, sorry, yeah. All right, um, yeah, sorry, I forgot about that. So, well, we'll put, can we just put a hold on that?
What, what, what are we, what are we suspending?
You're not noticed for that in the special board meeting, so you're gonna have to wait for that until.
Right, so we'll just.
There are two other motions in the special board meeting.
Right.
You're premature.
Yes, I know, sorry, had the wrong agenda up in front of me.
That's okay.
Toggling in front of the wrong meetings, um, all right, so I will entertain a motion then under educator contracts.
I move that the issuance of educator contracts for the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a routine at this time of year, any questions or comments? Okay, Sandy.
Warren.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Sitnikoff.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Sheldon.
Aye.
Brandon Hugel.
Abstain.
All right, carried six to one abstention, next is.
I move the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
I do have, oh Terry is on here, hi Terry, I have a question for Terry, a few of the employments are dated three twenty-three, and that's obviously after our, the schools closed, are they, are they, all of them still going to be employed as of the twenty-third of March?
Yes, these were employments that were already in the works and were essential positions to continue to move, we are not currently moving any new positions forward at this time and will be, the jobs that we have posted are posted now for the two thousand and twenty-one school year where we have known vacancies.
Okay, all right, thanks. Anybody else? All right Sandy.
Sheldon.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Brandon Hugel.
Aye.
Sitnikoff.
Aye.
Maloney, I mean, I'm sorry, McCoy.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Carried, carried seven zero, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
So moved.
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, now we'll go into the teaching and learning work session. Let's see. All right, so I'll, let's just, I'll re-entertain the motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
If someone could actually read that, oh. Um, hang on, otherwise I can.
You want me to read it?
Sure Christina.
Sure, so this is the one to just suspend the rules, I move that the rules be suspended to suspend in-person public appearances and comments.
Second.
All right, and this, as you all are aware is, is a compromise in terms of trying to be able to hold open meetings and being able to hold them over the internet, and so we've put in process a plate, put in process the opportunity for people in the public to give us their comments via written comments and that's available on the website and, and then also an option if, if someone would choose that your comments could be read if, in the meeting, we'll have someone read those in our meeting. And so that's, especially next week we have a public hearing, we will be considering the waivers and suspension of some policies because of the school closures and, and so we, we have to have a public hearing on that, so, and that's outlined in the waiver document itself. So, but the board has to vote to suspend the rules for in-person public appearances.
So how, what is the effect of that, is that done each, each meeting, is it, is it open-ended?
Is it in the, Melissa, the, it's not in our suspension of policies, right? Or is it, I don't remember.
Hang on.
I would assume we're suspending the rules for tonight because there's no option for tonight to have in-person public appearances and we would have to do it again next week.
We do have it, so, so we do have it in the draft of, that we're gonna discuss later, it is on page. Five, it, it says, whereas the Green Bay area public school district encourages public participation in its board meetings and as a result has adopted policy one eighty-seven, public participation and has approved subsequent revisions to said policy, the most revision, recent approved on October fifteenth, twenty eighteen, and then it talks about the safer at home order and then number eleven in the resolution section says, in an effort to comply with Governor Evers safer at home order, ordering residents of the state to stay home, practice social distancing and to take all possible actions to reduce further spread of COVID nineteen, the Green Bay area public school district board of education has determined to hold its board meetings virtually and hereby amends Board of Education policy one eighty-seven for the duration of the public health emergency to allow public participation in its school board meetings through submission of written comments to be read during a virtual board meeting. So tonight's motion that you're being asked to vote on is specific just to tonight's meeting because we haven't suspended, adopted a resolution to suspend in-person appearances to minimize spread of COVID nineteen to members of our community, so it's just for tonight's board meeting.
Okay.
And we'll discuss this waiver later.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm good with it for, for tonight, I'm good with it.
All right. And well, Sandy, roll call.
Okay.
We're voting, Andrew.
Aye.
Sitnikoff.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Brandon Hugel.
Aye.
Sheldon.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
All right, carried seven zero, and then our open forum, there are no, we had nobody submit comments for our open forum tonight, next is teaching and learning and that will be facilitated by Eric Brandon Hugel.
All right, thanks Brenda, we've got three things tonight, we'll start with the Head Start Grant and the Quality Improvement Grant. So this is John, the Head Start, the, the cost of living piece, that's just a, an annual thing that goes through for a raise in cost of living and so that, so that's something that, that goes through on a regular basis as is this school piece. Anybody have any questions on this? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next one which is the request for DPI for the waivers for instructional minutes.
Hi, good evening, this is Michelle, just wanted to give you some background, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, since we learned of the pandemic and COVID nineteen, we have been moving forward with an abundance of caution, certainly assuring the physicals. Continue to be for all of our students and staff, as the governor came forward with the closure of schools, I received a phone call along with the other superintendents from Madison, Kenosha, Racine and Milwaukee from the Department of Public Instruction that talked to us about, the request was, what are the concerns that we would have, obviously we knew that the minutes would be of great concern, but what other areas could potentially disadvantage a student in the future based on this new environment that we were in and so the state superintendent Dr. Carolyn Stamper-Taylor really wants to move forward with, to be very empathetic and flexible, so the waivers that you see before you reflect an opportunity for the district, obviously the Department of Public Instruction can't unilaterally say, we're gonna just waive this and we're, we're gonna waive that, but rather each board of education in each area needs, district needs to make those decisions. The waiver is not intended to reduce standards and level of, of opportunities for kids in terms of their pathways to, to learning, we have a continuation of learning as you well know, I thought Brenda spoke very accurately about the incredible, incredible work that our teachers are doing to step in and step up, they've done a phenomenal job, our students are engaging, our parents are engaging and most of all, we've been able to provide supports and resource for ensuring that students can participate and everyone can participate and also be safer at home, so that's really the intention of the waiver, again, I had some very good conversations with some teachers around some of the concerns in, in the waiver, they, there was a concern that, that there wouldn't be a recognition that students are engaging in these courses and really what this is intended to do is afford the board, the request for us on the table to the board is to approve affording the district that flexibility so that I can go and ask the Department of Public Instruction, we want to avoid any unintended consequence and that's really why they tapped the, the large urbans on the shoulder and said, will these waivers be helpful to you to ensure no disadvantage to students and no disadvantage to staff in this new, new unprecedented public health emergency. Melissa Thiel-Koller has done an extraordinary job putting the waivers together so that we can move forward and have, in a resolution form and then closely aligned with that obviously is the board resolution to suspend board policies related to COVID nineteen only, so I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa to walk you through those and make sure that you have all of your questions answered and we're here as well, so Melissa.
Thank you, the DPI has outlined on the DPI's website, the, an expedited process to be able to apply for waivers of the statutory requirements for instructional minutes, the civic exam and the educator effectiveness requirements for this year, the governor did suspend the administrative rules with respect to these three topics, but what he's not able to do is suspend the statutory requirements with respect to these topics, so the DPI and a number of other individuals have advised that we are still required to request a waiver of these topics, in order to request a waiver, the statute requires you to hold a public hearing with respect to that request, so that will be held on April thirteenth next week, we, the statutory language is not clear how to post for a hearing with respect to a DPI waiver because it's hardly ever done, so we followed the most restrictive requirements for posting and we followed the budgetary, budget hearing requirements for posting, so the posting was done in three public places as well as a class one legal notice in the newspaper, so the most, the most notices that were possible were, were done with respect to the hearing on April thirteenth, Lori's office has done a nice job also of getting information out and once again, we will have public comment on the waiver request when, before the April thirteenth meeting. The Wisconsin Attorney General has also put out guidance with respect to these virtual meetings and how to provide a good format for obtaining public comment and we feel pretty confident that we're doing that for you with respect to that public hearing.
Have a question.
Sure.
For members of the public and others that are interested, would you be able to discuss what, when we talk about waiving the educator effectiveness requirements, what that actually means, the difference between, you know, what if we weren't doing it versus what will happen if we move forward with it and if it's waived?
Terry, would you wanna speak to that?
Yes, I can speak with that, following the Department of Public Instruction's guide, guidance and actually our current district practice, what the waiver would mean would be that the educator and the supervisor would have the flexibility to decide which aspects of the cycle they would complete and which aspects of the cycle they would prefer not to have complete due to closure and it would allow them then to roll forward and not have to repeat the cycle year, without the waiver, we would need to complete the requirements of the cycle year and roll them forward, or we would need to require them to repeat the cycle year over again, so for example, if we have a teacher in a summary year cycle, if it's not completed, they need to repeat that entire summary year, so all of the aspects that they've already completed this year would be archived and rolled forward, but they would have to start over at the beginning of the next school year, with the waiver, we would allow, be able to allow them to roll forward to the next year and we would archive that's already completed and they would do those things in collaboration with their supervisor, this would impact our board policy five thirty-eight, which also lays out language around completing those cycle years once every three years.
Terry, so just to re, just make sure I'm understanding, this decision would be made between the educator and the supervisor, they would come together and decide what the plan is for each individual educator?
Correct, for those educators that have a lot finished and are really comfortable with where they're at and would like to complete all of the aspects, they would have the ability to do so, but for those educators that perhaps are just for the first time teaching virtually or for whatever reasons don't have the data that they wanna have in place for their SLO or PPG or those types of things, it would provide that flexibility then to archive what is complete and then roll forward and not have to repeat.
Okay, thanks, and sorry, I don't know if this is maybe getting too far ahead, but can you give me, how does that look in terms of supporting the educator and the supervisor so that they can make the best decision moving forward, how do, how do we support that?
Yep, we actually are in really great shape in our district because we already had a process in place for educators that perhaps were on an FMLA, perhaps they were taking a leave because they unexpectedly needed to have, you know, they broke their ankle and were off of work for a period of time, so we've already had a process in place in our district, so there's a cycle year not complete form that we have in place and then we have zero instance the incomplete forms and then we are able to do the roll which archives the data that they have completed, we would be supporting with communication with a staff letter around the language the DPI has shared around how we can collaboratively have those conversations and work together to determine what will work best so that the educators that would like the formative feedback and would like to complete the cycle are able to do so and those that would prefer to not have certain aspects completed because of whatever the details are, this would allow that flexibility to do that as well, and then if, if we receive permission to waiver, we would not need to reset all of the individuals, so the impact on the schools if we do not do the waiver would be that we'd have all of the year two cycle teachers rolling to summary year and we'd have to take all of this year's summary years and also have them on summary year, so we're taking a third and a third and we're really putting two-thirds of our staff then in that summary year cycle which is going to give our supervisors an additional third of their staff that would need to be in a summary year next year without the waiver.
So, so as a, for instance, there was, there was a matter that came to my attention related to East High School recently and there was communication from.
So as a, for instance, there was a matter that came to my attention related to East High School recently. And there was communication from the principal about people who are in their summary year, that if they want, that basically there was a really quick opportunity for them to do, because the principals and the administrative teams are getting into classrooms and supporting teachers and doing observation, that for those that were on summary year, if, you know, that that was an opportunity for them to close things out with a mini observation. Because if people are in good standing with a mini observation, that would be a way that they could close things out. And then they, they had, the principal, when she sent out that communication, asked, you know, if people have any questions or concerns that they were welcome to redirect those questions back to her. So just as a, for instance, if somebody is nearly done and this allows them to close out their summary year, it made sense for her. And then it was shared with Judy and Terry and then myself at this point, that if people wanted to close out that cycle, that this would be a relatively painless, relatively quick opportunity for people to do so. However, if somebody was not comfortable with an observation or a mini observation, you know, that could be something that would be very, very definitely could be brought up. And the person could say, no, I'd rather wait till next year when we're doing it for, as a regular observation.
And that many observation, John, could be done virtually?
Sure.
How does that look? I, I mean, I...
Sure. So if somebody was, for instance, to do their observation, they're getting into classrooms quite a bit. So they're going in and looking at, you know, spending time with the teachers during their virtual chats, spending time, teachers have office hours, things of that nature. A mini observation is really only, you know, 15, 20 minute pop in to really have that conversation and really observe some interaction. So it would be an opportunity. It's not meant at all as a gotcha. It's meant as an opportunity if somebody wants to finish that summer year so it doesn't carry on to have that opportunity. But we would allow, of course, for flexibility. And we'll make sure we reiterate that tomorrow.
Thanks, John. I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
It's my understanding that the issue at East, well, one of the issues was that it was during the first week back where we were doing the virtual online remote learning. Is there an extension for that date for East High School teachers if they want to do the mini lesson observation, but do it beyond sort of that first week? Because I know there was some anxiety and apprehension doing it then.
And I'll be glad to touch base with the principal. Go ahead, Terry.
I was just going to say, the cycle year goes all the way through the end of the school year. So there's flexibility with the timeline to do that collaboratively and to determine what that looks like and when. And again, there's the flexibility around the different aspects and what would be completed and then archived.
Okay. Are you good? Okay. So when do you anticipate these conversations when they're able to happen? Is it after the public hearing? Or is it after the public hearing and then whatever is sent off to DPI? When can these conversations start happening with the supervisor and the educator?
After the board makes a decision relative to the waiving of the board policy, we would then be able to communicate with the staff because we would be in alignment with what the DPI has recommended as best practice. And we would have the pieces that we would need in order to be able to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Be after the board's decision that we would communicate.
Are there any other questions for us in regard to the waivers or the policy suspension of board policies? Those two documents right now?
I just have a general question. Michelle, has GBEA provided any feedback?
Yeah, and I think Terry and Melissa actually are on point and speak to them every day. And I don't know if you have anything to add, Terry and Melissa, other than the conversations?
Melissa's been meeting with them and leading that charge. But I would say in my conversations related to the educator effectiveness, they are in support of what we have recommended and moving forward with the waiver.
We've talked about this a number of times. Both the president and the executive director are in full support of the flexibility, not only for kids, but also staff and building leadership in order to make sure that we are meeting the unique and fluid needs of all of those stakeholders in this situation.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, if nobody has anything else, that concludes...
Wait, are we on, so we're doing A, B, and C all at once? Are you just finishing up B?
We were doing B and C together. But if you want to separate them, we can certainly do that. Andrew, if you have any other questions for us?
Well, yes, I, well, I acknowledge that, you know, given the very short timeline, there are some, you know, public participation maybe had to be different for today and no one availed themselves anyways. And next week, I think we have a compromise in place. But with technology that I believe does exist that would allow members from the public to be brought into a meeting if they wanted to be on Zoom and maybe they wouldn't, I think that option needs to be there or at least, you know, tested and looked at going forward. I'm not, I'm not going to be ready to say, you know, take a vote that for however long the public health emergency is in place that you can't have any live participation at all. Although I'm okay with what's been worked out for this week and for next week. So if this is the first discussion on, I guess if this is the first point of discussion before a vote, presumably on the, like, how does that work? We're discussing today something that we would, we're going to vote on all the suspension of policies next week. Some, which makes sense. Some of them, some of them specifically require a formal hearing before you suspend them, others don't. But we're just going to do them all.
No, there's two different things, Andrew. The formal hearing is required for the request to the DPI for the waiver. There's no public hearing required for modification of the board policies.
Right. But we'll take both votes next week.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that the revision of the policies doesn't require a public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
But since one, since some of them require a public hearing, we're going to also do, we'll do all voting on the same day.
Yeah, the wa, yep. Since the waiver requires the public hearing, we're going to do, have the public hearing and then have a regular board meeting on the 13th.
Yep. So I guess, yeah, I'm not okay with precluding, precluding members of the public from having one of their options be to be to participate via Zoom. You can, if you have the right type of Zoom account, you can call out to a phone number. You can invite, have someone come in, give their comments. I mean, I, again, I'm talking about the 27th, not the 13th. But if, if we have two options to discuss and one of them is the night we vote, I think that's worth some discussion right now.
Josh, can you, can you weigh in on, I don't know if you and Andrew had conversations, but could you weigh in on what Andrew is proposing with respect to the public participation via Zoom?
Yeah, I mean, Zoom's about a week old for me right now. So I'd have to look into those features to see what are possible. We would want to make sure that whatever we did, we didn't pick a solution that allowed for the link to the meeting to be leaked, even if we do password protect it, to allow that password to be leaked, you know, that kind of thing. Because I think the last thing we need is uninvited people showing up here. I'd have to, I'd have to look into the Zoom feature set of the account we purchased.
Could you do, how long will that take, Josh? And what kind of time will that take for you to have that understanding?
I can start it right now, I suppose.
Okay.
I'll send you, I'll send you, I'll send you the link to phone participation right now. And I, I mean, you, if you have your account upgraded to the right level, the meeting organizer can choose a box and add a phone number and call it.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to shoot me that link, Andrew, that would be, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this something that the rest of board members are interested? I haven't only heard Andrew talk.
Are we interested in doing what? What is your question?
In pursuing, having the ability for people to call in or be whatever.
To be called, that's a big difference, but...
To be called into Zoom and it would just be audio? There'd be no screen sharing option, Andrew?
I'm, I'm starting, I'm starting with the audio because I don't know how the video works to bring. I could, I could see there, I mean, I get Zoom bombing. So, but this would be a way, because we do have some open, some opportunities for interactivity. I think the option I'm sending to Josh probably could work. I don't know if, I mean, it might require the account to be upgraded a little bit. It might, it might not. But then you just have the, and I would propose that we don't remove the option if you don't want to have anything to do with this. And we'd just like to have your public comments officially put into the record in writing. I think that's, I think that's okay, too.
If I could, I just want to make sure, Josh, if you can look into it, the time commitment is really, that's, I don't know what this entails. And so I would like to know that. And then maybe we can discuss further. It doesn't sound like it would be a lot, but I don't know. I know that our priority right now is to make sure every child has a Chromebook and access, Wi-Fi access as well as staff. But I don't know if this is, if this is onerous or not. I really don't, so...
I don't even know that, I mean, and I'm certainly, you know, appreciative of, you know, Josh's help, especially for the first, for the first ones of these. But I would think by the time we're on the third one of them, if we did a proper, a proper test, whoever's chairing the meeting should be able to, could be able to add and drop someone out. If I'm correct about my link and if I'm wrong about my link, then tell me I'm wrong about my link. But I don't, it's, you know, it is, some people are going to feel that it is, you know, less than to not be able to give your comments verbally or to have them read or to have them put into a record, but with no real chance of it being picked up by media or becoming part of the larger conversation. I mean theoretically, but probably not. So, yeah. So anyways, if you just want to check on the, the link and see if that's an option, and I'm, you know, that way a person will say, we have two-way participation and there's not a good way to, there may not be a good way to have the video participation. I'm not precluding that. But what I'm mostly concerned about is that someone can participate live instead of it being separate and written.
And I would actually say that that's probably a very important thing to look into, especially considering we're more than likely going to do several of these meetings. If there's any way that we could maybe just see if it's possible. I support that.
I do, too. And Josh, as you're working through that, I'm happy to support you. I'm super familiar with Zoom. There's some different functions that you can set up as well that you, no one can, you have to allow certain people to come into the meetings. You can remove them if there are people who happen to get in. So as you're looking at all that, if that can be of support to you, just, just let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I would say that the easiest solution, I think, is if, is if we call the person, because then we don't have to worry about waiting rooms and, and people getting in. And if we've called the person, then it's easy to, if something were to happen, that's, that's, you know, Zoom bombing type stuff that we have control and can cut, can cut that person out.
We can do that virtually anyways, Rhonda, through the, through the options that you have in front of you. If you, if somebody happened to get in, you could get rid of them immediately. So, and I don't think we can call anybody. They have to call in.
But Andrew says that we can call. That's his, right, Andrew?
Yeah, here, I'll post it. I'll just post the link out in the, can you do that?
We turned the chat off because of open records issues and open meeting issues.
Yeah, just send an email, if you can, Andrew, to board members. That'd be great.
Okay, cool.
And Josh, if we could just communicate, then we'll get a sense of what this means and what your thoughts are. And we'll get that communication back out to you so that...
Can I just make a suggestion then? Given that this is going to be fluid, and I agree with Rhonda, this isn't going to be our first of virtual meetings as we look out to the timeline of this virus. So looking at the language of number 11, which is the second to last page in the resolution for the suspension of policies, currently it says that we would, because the board has determined to hold its board meetings virtually and hereby amends Board of Education Policy 187 for the duration of the public health emergency to allow public participations in its school board meetings to be done virtually. And then that way, as we learn of new technology and we, you know, if we try the Zoom call-in, but it's not working or we have Zoom bombers or, you know, whatever, as this keeps going on, that would give the flexibility to be able to offer virtual participation as we work through this.
I mean, I'm probably okay with that. But I think I want to see us end with something on the 13th that says that starting on the 27th, there will be some, one of the options will be something that is live. That's where I'm hoping will be, again, this is at the end of the 13th with regards to the 27th and ongoing. I also think we might have to, we don't need to do it now, but there's going to be a point where I think we'll have a public, we may have a public health emergency declaration of some kind that will last many months after certain types of gatherings are able to resume. And I'm sure it's, nobody's intent to just say, hey, let's be, you know, let's be virtual for six months, even if we have a public health emergency that is amended by June to be gatherings under 500 or whatever. I mean, they're not going to be in any kind of hurry to just remove the public health emergency. So I think there's going to be room for some. I think we will probably return to meetings where people are present probably sooner than the last day of public health emergency exists in the state of Wisconsin.
So what if it read, so if it read, for the duration of the public health emergency to allow public participation in its school board meetings to be done virtually with the goal of allowing live virtual participation?
Well, because that means that you don't have to, but, right?
Well, it's allowing, it's recognizing your goal, Andrew, for the live virtual participation, but also recognizing there may be limits to technology as we work through this.
There's no need to commit to that today because I think, I think it...
I'm just asking for clarification, how you want this to read for the 13th? Because it's easier for Sandy if we have something drafted than if we are, because it's going to be a motion. So then all of the motions to amend the language are going to cause her to have to keep redrafting motions. are going to cause her to have to keep redrafting motions.
I, I guess I would I would be okay with for the duration of the public health emergency to allow virtual public participation or public virtual, whichever order is correct, participation and, and its school board meetings, period, and then just cut it off there. I, I'm, I'm actually good there. I think I understand why you wouldn't want a wordsmith, you know, through the call-in, through the organizer call-out option provided by Zoom at this link. I mean, I get, I get that. I also don't want to be so limiting that if, if the video options are reasonable to, to control when someone comes in and goes out, that's even better, but I didn't want to, you know, over promise right now, so.
Okay, so.
I'm good with saying, I'm good, there will be virtual participation. Now, where I would have a concern is if we said this on 13th and then virtual participation turned out to be not live between, I don't know, but, see, this is that tension between, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's going to be fine and everyone means well, but also having to go to the public and say, I voted, you know, for something that ensures that there's going to be, after we get a couple bugs roached out the first couple of weeks, bear with us, after that, right? So that's why I'm trying to, to balance.
But let me ask this, as I look at this, Andrew, I'm thinking about the virtual public participation, but I also wouldn't want to strike out someone who wanted to submit written comments to be read either.
No, that's right. I, I guess I assume that to be a type of virtual public participation, but I think virtual participation and written comments, yeah, leave, leave them both.
Yeah, I just think that I might think that I have to call in and might not want to.
Good point. Yep, you might think that it's virtual only and we took away, yep. Didn't mean that.
Okay. Okay, so he, here's how I have it drafted then, for the, for the duration of the public health emergency to allow virtual public participation in its school meet, school board meetings and permit submission of written comments to be read during a virtual board meeting.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes to this, this resolution with respect to suspension of board policies?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
That concludes the teaching and learning report.
Thanks Eric. Next is organizational support and that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right. I have a lot of tabs of that. There we go, all right. Okay, so we have under discussion items. First, we have Capital Projects Fund 46 Resolution.
We have both Pete Ross and Mike Stengel to talk about the, the Capital Projects Fund 46 Resolution and then they'll follow that with the energy resolution.
Just to introduce the Capital Projects Resolution again, you guys have seen it before. It goes partner and partner with the energy resolution, provides you a vehicle and you'll see that we have included in there every year the ability to spend money through Fund 46 toward energy projects. So it is the vehicle with which you could, if you chose to fund energy projects through that process. It's a financial tool for you to use or to choose not to use, but not having it available to you prevents you from being able to use it. So it's a simple motion to make it available for you.
All right. Questions, Rhonda?
Pete, can you, can you talk, can you speak to why this would be useful, why we would want to consider having this in place?
Right, the main purpose for the Fund 46 is to have a financial tool for school districts to use. So really doesn't matter whether you're a heavily aided district like Green Bay or you're a property wealthy district. Not like Green Bay, school business officials can use these tools to best leverage aid coming to the school district. I, in a school district like Green Bay that's heavily aided, what I would do is use the fund to accumulate funds necessary to pay for these capital projects in the future and in the process of accumulating those funds, you're actually aided at the time those funds go in. So for example, in Green Bay, every dollar you put into this fund, you're going to get 68 cents back from the state of Wisconsin. So it's a great way to get the state to participate in these capital projects for you and help fund them. If you were a very wealthy school district, there's strategies that you can use for Fund 46 as well. For example, I would heavily load Fund 46 every other year. I would be, that way you would put the fund or the school district in a negative tertiary spending one year and not the next year. And in doing so, you'd be able to maximize your aid. So it's simply a financial tool to use to maximize the state commitment to help you fund the projects that you want to do in your district. It's a, it's a very smart move for the district to make.
Is there a reason why this hasn't been done prior to in, being introduced to it today?
Yeah, I don't know if I want to go into the reason. I think that about five years ago, it was looked at seriously, but never brought to the board's attention. I wish it would have been in place five years ago because we certainly would be using it now. So it's kind of like my dad always said, the best time to plant a tree is 10 years ago. The best time to put a Fund 46 in place would have been five years ago, but, but you guys didn't do it.
There's no doubt, there, there's no, there's no downside because you can just choose to put zero in one year.
Absolutely, Andrew. You're 100% correct.
Well, there's al, there, there's almost no doubt. I could, I could construct a downside if I, if I had to, but it's, it's pretty remote. Because right now, if you put, right now, if you have 500,000 left over, at the end of the year, you've probably found out about it too late to really do anything about it. Then it goes into fund balance and then that can be bad because, and yeah, so there's no, yeah, that's disappointing, but you're here now, you're recommending Fund 46 now and we can set it up now with no downside if we don't use it.
Yep, you're 100% correct, Andrew. You don't have to fund it. You can fund it. You, it's entirely up to the school board. It doesn't cost you a penny. But I will tell you that every dollar that you put in, the state is going to contribute 68 cents and it'll pay you back the following year. So a pretty damn good return on your investment.
Thank you. Other questions?
No, just to comment, I think it's an excellent idea and thanks for bringing it forward, Pete.
And Mike, this is, this is a joint, a joint operation here.
And Mike, yes. Sorry.
Okay, anything else on this one? Okay, we'll move that forward. Let me turn to speak up, does anyone? No, going, going, go on, okay. Then energy, GVA PSD Clean Energy Resolution. Questions or comments? We've had discussion on this one before. I had one or two calls from the public asking for, hoping that, you know, would we still be doing this in the reduced meeting schedule? And I think this is one of those times where we have thorough discussion. Everyone seems to be on board and there's no downside. Any, any additional questions or comments here?
Just a quick question, Andrew. We're voting on this on the 13th, correct?
Are we posted for it on the 13th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the, and the Fund 46 too or no?
Yes.
Yes. Well, great. In that case, I'm thrilled to be able to vote for it.
Okay. If there's anything else, if there's nothing else on that, we'll move forward.
Andrew?
Yes?
Andrew, if I could, once again, just thank everybody who was part of this resolution. I think that we have people out there who worked hard on it and I know we've had board members who participated as well and I know they were mentioned at the last meeting, but this is a big step forward and I think, as I think about the children that we're serving today and their future and also the, the children, my grandchildren and everyone else's children on this planet, this is a big step forward for the district. So I commend everyone for that and all their work. So thank you.
All right. All right, then moving ahead, human resources discussion items. First item, literacy intervention, language therapy program, academic language therapist, job description.
Here, and we brought this forward last month, but if this is a, has a memo and a job description related to the academic language therapist positions that we discussed and we're, we're moving forward or hoping to move forward rather, with three positions for the coming year. We've been working very hard to make sure that our phonemic awareness efforts are well-maintained, particularly in the pre-K and kindergarten years as well as the early years of, of elementary experience. And so we've worked really hard with the letters training with our, with our staff as well as ziphonics and a variety of other measures. The the outline here related to the cost is for three language interventionists who would be working with students who have dyslexia-like learning challenges related to reading as well as the professional learning that would be required for very, very intensive training at, at this point in a program called Take Flight, which is a language therapy program. And this, this would allow us to, to really get a, a clear sense of how our students are, would, would be doing with this and really think about what would, what would it look like if we're expanding forward past this? So what this really does is it enters into a a very solid, but yet unexplored common, common ground between those who are working with whole language and those who are working with students who have needs better met through a scientific learning method. And so what this does is it allows us to capitalize on training up a number of, a number of language interventionists, three in this case, for a pilot study to, to really make sure that we're hitting that particular area of phonemic awareness.
All right. Yeah, no, okay, I saw Eric raising his hand, but depending on the view, I, I don't automatically, I guess I could go into gallery view, then I see, okay. But Eric happened to be outside, see it otherwise, it was about a 20% chance we'll see Eric.
Well, maybe I should play the lottery. I like my odds. John, a question that I have for you, I appreciate the pilot. I, I love that our district is taking some action and perhaps you're not the best person to ask this question because you won't be here for the implementation, but I'm wondering about the placement of those three people. I don't, I don't remember if we talked about it in our teaching and learning meeting or not, but what I'm worried about from a pilot standpoint is for a vocal advocate for your child, maybe some of their literacy struggles. You're going to maybe have access to this and if you're a parent who maybe doesn't have the capacity to advocate quite as loudly, that your kid might not, you know, might not be able to participate. So do you have any feedback on how we're going to allocate? Three people is a great start, but we know that's not going to meet all the need.
Sure. So really, the allocation and, and I'll, I'll make sure I follow back and touch base with Nancy to make sure that, that it's completely precise. But we're really looking at this as partnering with three schools. So we'd be picking three schools that represent a variety of situations in the district. So it wouldn't necessarily be that we're serving all students through this initially, that this gives us an opportunity to roll it out and see how, how does this function within the particular schools that are selected for these, these services? And what that would do then is again, kind of like what we did with the Bridges pilot, we looked at schools that represented multiple facets of, of the district and putting the positions in for Bridges or the supports for Bridges into those schools. Let us see what were the particular challenges and what were some of the opportunities that we can maximize in a whole district rollout? I'm not saying for sure that we don't do a whole district rollout, but I think what this does is it gives us a chance to really see how it functions in those areas. Furthermore, I would say that it, as we move forward, it's also working with the, the state and we're working with the five districts as part of the big five as far as some of the literacy efforts that are going on related to how are we addressing some of the the challenges related particularly to literacy and particularly related to phonemic awareness that are coming from the state level. How are we dealing with it? And it really allows us to pioneer in a direction that I believe will be best for not just our district, but potentially the state. So again, it's not meant for who is advocating the most loudly for their own child. It's, it's meant as we're going to serve a set number of schools that we would normally serve with three, three individuals and see what, what does this look like? How does it function? And we're also picking schools that, we want to pick schools that have a strong literacy foundation, a strong, strong structures in place so that it's not just missing gaps that are already there for other purposes. So really it's intended to hit that. So that's really how it addresses.
If, if I could add, just in my conversations with Nancy and John, one of the things that Nancy spoke to and it really shows up in the job description is that recognition that these individuals will be interfacing obviously with our other interventions as part of that whole literacy team. So part of this process will be learning with and from each other and in, in a rich learning participatory opportunity. So that was my takeaway and I think Nancy explained that to me that, that there would be obviously interaction between all of the literacy team that supports our children as well. So I would expect that the lessons learned as they move together in this could well be, you know, shared out and, 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 and learned so that, you know, as we all learn together is really the, how it was explained to me.
Thank you for that. One other quick question, maybe this would be for Terry. Understanding that it might be hard to find people with 316 and three, or 317 licenses. I'm wondering, will this just get posted in general for internal and external applicants? I might hate to pull, you know, three of our literacy specialists who are already doing great work. I don't want to hold them back from an opportunity, but I just worry about the capacity of excellent reading teachers in our district.
It would be for both. We would post internally and externally. And we are working very closely with three of our main partners, UWGB, St. Norbert's and UW Oshkosh in some virtual recruitment. We're piloting Handshake and this would be one of the areas that we would be looking at relative to, many of our staff have gotten their 316 masters through UW Oshkosh in particular, through some grants and other pieces and we would absolutely continue to partner so that we would be able to fill positions. If it's an internal candidate, that we would have a 316 licensed individual to fill in for that person so that we would have that succession planning as well. So we want to be able to support the best candidates being able to move forward for the positions and then have a solid succession plan behind.
Perfect. You said the name of that program was Handshake?
Yes, we are piloting in particular with UWGB, UW Oshkosh and St. Norbert's as working with their career centers and our contacts for student future placements actually for recruitment for this upcoming school year.
It's a really unfortunate name during social distancing.
Yeah, for a virtual product, no.
Sorry, I got bad jokes.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I have some questions, Andrew.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm wondering if, um, a, as it outlined in the memo, that a lot of, currently, a lot of language therapy takes place in private practice, and, um, outside of school districts, and so I'm wondering if it's absolutely necessary to have that 316 or 317 reading specialist license as a required thing, as opposed to having it be desired, because I'm wondering if there's people out there that are actually already, uh, called CALT certified, that would want to apply for this job, but, and would be highly qualified, because they've spent 10 years doing language therapy, but because they don't have a license, we wouldn't be able to, uh, 316 or 317 license, we wouldn't be able to hire them.
I can reach out to our consultant at the Department of Public Instruction, but it's my understanding that it's a licensing issue, um.
Yeah, Terry, Terry, this is Michelle. One of the discussions that we talked about, um, with the Department of Public Instruction, and Mike Thompson, and, uh, Carol in Stanford Taylor, is this issue, because it's, it's been an issue. So, um, I'm wondering if, I, I, we don't have it waived now, um, but there, there are, to Brenda's point, um, individuals with that same kind of experience. So I think if you reach out and then let me know if I can be of assistance, um, I think it's a question that we should be asking, and possibly leverage a district of innovation approach on something like this.
Is it possible to have an answer by next week when we vote on this?
I'll reach out to, I have a contact at the DPI, David DeGeer, who's, um, who runs the licensing department, uh, for the department, and I'll reach out to him to see if we can, um, connect up, and, and we'll see what we can do.
Well, and I'm wondering too, and almost to me, it seems like the, um, the minimum five years teaching and/or intervention experience should actually be required, and the license desired, that's, I almost feel like those two should be flipped.
So, so I think, uh, th- those are, those are points worthy of conversation, and I think we, we want to do some double checking with, with DPI. I also want to reiterate, uh, is, of course, uh, related to the position and how it is serving the district, it's, it's definitely intended, as we do this pilot, that the lessons learned will be things that are shared with, with all, and so that the literacy interventionists and the district as a whole will be lifted through this work. Uh, the reason why I answered the question the way that I did is because there, there, there has been some concern that if there's any student that is struggling with reading, that people might jump to, uh, wanting to make sure that we're using this position for, uh, intervention with that particular student. We want to make sure that, as with any interventionist position, that we're looking at, what are the predetermining criteria that would cause us to identify them for the need for this intervention? So really, it's about lifting the needs for all of our students, uh, but we also want to make sure that it is a position that's intended and, uh, focused on serving the, the students that are, that are part of that, that, uh, that group that is being served, while they're also enhancing learning for others. But I think that, um, the, the certification questions that were asked, there were, there were a few questions that came up related to, uh, the position, if they, you know, how that position could serve beyond this, and making sure, sometimes making sure, if we can get the 316 or the 317, that's, that's a, uh, some, sometimes having some of those background skills, some of that foundational understanding of literacy, that can also be helpful, uh, potentially, in understanding that if you're working with dyslexic, students with dyslexia-like issues, but they're facing other challenges, if you have that strong reading background, that can also be helpful, but I understand your, your thoughts there, Brenda, as well, or at least I think I do, and I'm glad to clarify afterwards.
Okay, um, and then, looking down at position purpose, um, I'm wondering in the, I, I liked the description of the job in the memo more than I like what's in the position purpose itself, and I'm, and I'm wondering, so what I liked in the memo is that it says, um, uh, supporting students with, and this is the part that I, um, that I'm wondering if we can put back in the job description, supporting students with dyslexia and related language-based learning differences, um, because that, to me, gives a, a much better description of what this is, because it's obviously something that's supposed to be different than what we're doing now, and I think it is definitely something that is intended to address the needs of students with dyslexia, and, um, my preference would be to have it in the actual job description.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, this is part of, I mean, yes, it's, it's important that we're offering this to our kids, it's also important that we're being a leader in a world that is pretending that dyslexia isn't real, and I, I knew there was some weirdness around the issue, but I had no idea the, the depths of this denial, and we've been, we've done better with it than most, but you can only do so much when almost everyone's coming out of a university that preaches that dyslexia isn't real, and I'm just, yeah, I would like to, you know, this makes a statement and makes us a, a leader, so I would like to see that find its way into the job description, though I'm not particularly interested in, you know, wordsmithing it tonight, but I would like to see that get in there. Other, other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple more, sorry. Um, so there's a, um, what does number seven mean? I'm not quite sure what that means.
Oh, Brenda, I'm not sure the right position is posted.
Yeah, I, I'm actually.
John and I are, are texting back and forth, because the last job description that we both looked at did talk about dyslexia-like symptoms, and, and it also had a different number seven, and so that's why I'm sitting here just confused, and so I've been asking, John, do we have the right one up there? Did, we had so many iterations and drafts, that I'm wondering if, if, um, we, we in our virtual movement here posted the wrong one, because those were the two areas that were worked very hard on.
Sure, and I, and I had double-checked actually with, uh, and, and I can't see the, the attachments on, as part of the, the board doc, but I had worked with my, my assistant, and I had asked, are you sure that it has the one with the changes in number seven, uh, as well as the position description that has that? So I'm not sure, uh, what happened, but I will make sure that the, the, uh, the, the, the proper position description, the job description is, is shared out with the entire board, uh, first thing this morning, if not right, right now. I, Nancy, Nancy Chartier was, was texting at the same time, saying, did they get the wrong job description? So I feel, feel bad that that, that occurred, because we, we had the same concerns, and we probably spent, uh,
A long time.
Spent an hour on it, making sure that, that it had the correct description for, uh, for part number seven, as well as the description that, that clearly outlined dyslexia-like symptoms. So I will, I will share that, uh, in fact, I can share that with the, the board, um, right now via email.
And then we can post it to my, Sandy, can we repost that tomorrow? Or whenever? Well, she's nodding, I can see her, so, yeah, as I started to look at it, I could clearly see, because John and, and Nancy worked very hard on it, and, and, and had, uh, different descriptors in number seven, and, and a change, I think, in number six as well. So let's get the right one out there, but it really is intended to address the dyslexia-like symptoms, and really reflect the richness and the, the robust kind of training that is, is required for this as well.
Okay, um, I, I have a couple more questions, I think that it's not as much related to the job description, so I think we'll be okay. Um, the, uh, um, is there, and this is probably for Terry, I know we've talked about this, and I don't know if it needs to be in the job or where it goes, but if we invest in this two-year training, um, do we have some way of guaranteeing that the person will stay for a, a minimum amount of time, and if not, that they, um, uh, pay us back for their training?
We have no way to guarantee that they will stay with us, but there has been past practice where there has been, um, built-in payback, um, and, or, um, some type of, um, I'll let Melissa speak to that, I believe it was an addendum of some sort, that there was a, um, some, it would be included in liquidated damages, correct?
No.
No?
We, we can't guarantee, you're only allowed to issue a one-year contract for teachers, so you can't guarantee, um, a, a requirement of more than one year, and with respect to training, that is what, um, the employer invests in the employee, so under Wisconsin's Wage and Hour statute, you can't require payback of that either. Um, that's the risk every employer makes when you train employees and bring employees on. If we would give a bonus, so I think what Terry's thinking about is, we have given sign-on bonuses, not, not, um, the cost of training, but sign-on bonuses, and if staff don't stay the X amount of time that they receive that sign-on bonus, then they, um, do pay that back, but we have, we can't require payback for training.
Okay.
That is what I was referring to, thank you, Melissa, is what I was thinking of, and we have done that in some other types of positions.
And then, my last question is, under the, um, cost chart, um, it says, under travel, it says car rental? And does that mean we're renting a car? Because then it looks like you're just paying the mileage back to the person who drives their car.
So that would depend on where the training was held, if the training is held where somebody has to fly to, and then potentially rent a car because of, uh, let's just say that the training is five miles away from the hotel, or where, you know, we would try and do our best to make sure that it would, it was arranged, so that it would be efficient, but occasionally car rental has to be part of, uh, part of a, a travel piece. I can actually share my screen, so that I can share the updated, uh, job description, so that you can see how it's worded, and that I had just emailed it as well, but I can share it for the, uh, for the public.
But, but, yeah, John, but going back to the car rental, as I understand it, this training, at least as it is right now, would be in Illinois, and so it looks like it's set up to, to drive, because it says 422 miles, um, and I, I'm just, to me, it looks like we're renting a car, when I think really what we're doing is asking someone to drive, and then we're going to pay them back, like we usually do for mileage.
And I'll see, I'll see clarification on that, but I just want to.
Okay. I just wanted to make it clear to people that we're not renting cars for, for travel.
No, I appreciate that, appreciate that. That's something we definitely avoid, but if you look at the, uh, position purpose here, on the shared screen, to provide literacy and intervention to identified students with dyslexia-like related, or, uh, related language-based learning differences, not meeting proficiency. So that is the way that it's worded within the description that I just forwarded, and we'll make sure this is posted as well. And then item number seven, participates in all required training at both the state and district level, which shall include an observation and analysis of intervention sessions. Um, one thing that we found as well, is that, uh, given the current situation with health issues, there may be some delay in the training being provided, so there, this is, this is our best intention based on what we know at this point, but there are, there is a chance that, that our, uh, efforts or our training might be delayed based on cancellation of trainings as well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and so actually, seven is the same as my seven, and so can you explain what seven means? I'm now, like, I'm wondering, um, like, who does the evaluation, what, who's observing, um, just, can you clarify that a little bit?
Sure. That basically, the observa, let me make sure my mic is on. Good, yeah, just basically making sure that our, uh, observation standards as a whole are maintained, you know, as we do our, our, uh, evaluation of, of, of people, that we're, we're working to make sure that they are meeting the, uh, quality, both the fidelity and integrity of the intervention, and so that, that if there's any district training that, that they take part in, uh, some of it would be, some of this is boilerplate, just, just related to making sure you do your bloodborne pathogens and things of that nature, but also saying that you will, that you will engage in our normal observation analysis of intervention sessions. So, so it's basically making sure that, uh, as an interventionist, that you're following the criteria that we would have, where we observe you and we analyze, and we, we, uh, we give you feedback, and it's meant as a formative process, where, um, we're intending to help you grow based on what we're observing, and also, but it's, it's a back and forth session, we, we, we make sure that we're learning from the, uh, person providing the intervention as well.
Okay, thanks, I, yeah, I, I thought that's what it was, but it wasn't clear, so thank you for that.
Sure.
All right. Anything else?
I just want to apologize for that wrong, um, document being there, I'm not sure how that occurred, but we'll make sure we fix it and send out the right one.
As we have committee.
No, and I, I would offer in this new normal, it, it's not as always as easy, because we've got a lot of things moving, so I hope people grant us a little grace.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why, that's why we have the, the two weeks, and, yeah. All right. Um, next we have Executive Assistant to the Superintendent of Schools and Learning and Board of Education Job Description. Questions or comments?
I have a question. Is this, is this just basically, um, is this an update to the job description? What is, what is the purpose of the, of the agenda item?
It's an updated job description.
Okay.
The last job description was when I was first hired in the position, which is close to 20 years ago, so we just updated it.
Okay, um, can you, uh, are there any significant changes to it that you could address, or talk, touch on?
Um, no, it basically, um, it basically just changed the, you know, it used to have shorthand in it, and.
Okay.
You know, things like that, and then we just, uh, structured it to, um, cover some of the same job description characteristics that are in our current one, and then I added a lot of the, um, like, items number 20 through 28, which refers more to the board duties that I do, those were added.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do want to add, though, that Sandy does know shorthand, which is quite impressive.
I do.
There's no job description that would do Sandy justice.
Here, here.
Thank you.
I would concur.
Sandy, are you interested in applying for this position?
No, thank you.
Thought I'd try.
We can try the bonus approach.
All right, um, again, anything else on that one? All right, uh, Executive Assistant to Associate Superintendent for Pre-K 16 Programs Job Description.
And this is currently Linda's position, correct, yeah?
Correct.
All right, any questions on this one?
Um, is it the same thing, just update?
Correct.
Okay.
And then hers, um, we added a few things, specifically a word she does more towards, like, 18, I think, uh, 15, 16, 17, and 18, but otherwise, yeah, it's just an upgrade, or an updated revised.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And we'll move that forward, and then, uh, future, setting future agendas, future agenda topics. Brenna?
Um, yeah, I want to touch on, um, first, I just want to say that I'm so grateful for the amount of food distribution, the, the meals that have been out there for families in our district, that the district continues to provide meals, um, I'm very grateful for that. I'm also very grateful for the amount of volunteers that we have out there, uh, providing meals as well. Um, I think we can all agree that the, the needs are going to increase, uh, potentially in the next. potentially in the next few months. So I'm just looking for and hoping that we can have an update to the, I guess, the efforts that are being made to reach families that maybe have barriers out there that can't get to the distribution sites as well as would, if the needs increase and we're, we're reaching more families, would the district be open to allowing more staff to facilitate those deliveries? So I'm looking for some sort of an update on that.
Thanks Rhonda. Can I jump in too? Because I know we received that money from the Packers, Michelle. So that might be a nice way to add that in, some of the additional opportunities that exist. And I think to Rhonda's point exactly, I know I've gotten some questions from community about who can serve the meals and who can't and what staff are doing. So I think it would be beneficial to provide an overview of the philosophy of how we're approaching the meal program and where the district sees this going forward if we're still doing this in two to three months.
I would agree. We can, we can certainly bring that forward. I think one of the primary priorities is to make sure that our employees, that we support and utilize their, their services, obviously, and keep them safe. Amy Fish and Kim Shanick are on point with their volunteers. And they will be obviously working in partnership with the Packer Grant. I know that we have to prioritize the work for staff and then also look at where the volunteers are. It's my understanding there's a, a pretty robust pool of volunteers out there that Amy has that, that are interested in doing deliveries and things like that. So again, Vicky is serving on point with that particular piece. But right now, what we're trying to do is make sure that we utilize staff and keep them safe in that priority piece. And we know that we have the volunteers. So we've been able to balance that. Again, moving forward, I'm not sure how that's going to look or work. So again, as I, I shared with a, a community member, this is a one day at a time, always looking at, looking for immediate and then moving forward. Because I have to agree with Rhonda that I anticipate as this moves forward, the need is going to grow and grow and grow. And, and we can expect more of that as well. So again, we can certainly provide an update as to where we're at, how many meals are served. And, and also the, the recognition, you know, through the volunteer group, what that looks like as well.
Can I, can I clarify just a little bit more of what, what I'm asking for, just so that I'm clear?
Sure.
So it would be, it would be great, yes, to see what the meals have been, how the meals have been served at the food distribution sites. But I'm, I'm hoping that we can have something given to us and that it can actually be put on to an agenda so that it's public knowledge as well, that it's not just given to the board in a, in a communication. And that we're able to see how we're looking. Because what my, my concern personally, and I have heard this as well from others, is are we reaching enough people that have barriers that can't get to the sites? And how are we doing that? I think that would be great information to have in that, in that update as well. And then what are we doing to make sure that we can facilitate those needs? Because I know, and I know, we know this as well, that, and I've seen this at the, the distribution sites that I've been at.
Can I just, can I just pause this conversation just for a second? Because I think we're getting a little bit into an agenda topic versus asking for a future agenda. And it's a great discussion. I, I'm not saying that it's not. I just want to make sure, given it's, we're virtual and people are going to be hypersensitive to what we have posted. So if we can just, well, add the food service to a future agenda topic. And then Rhonda, if you want to connect with Michelle about exactly what you're looking to be covered, I think that might help.
That sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to be really clear publicly what I was looking for as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have one, Andrew. But before, before I talk about mine, I think, and this actually is a question for you, Rhonda. It was related to your agenda topic. I know we have people that are, that are drowning in work. As somebody told me today, the fire hose is on. And I'm, I'm wondering if, if you're okay with less of a handout and just somebody coming and explaining what's going on? Because I know the preparation time that goes into a real formal handout is, is quite a bit. And so as you talk to Michelle about what you're looking for, I would, I would just ask that you kind of keep that in mind and, and not, and not require a formal, a formal presentation with a formal handout like we would normally have.
Um, well, what I would say to that is, I'm wondering what's in place right now. So I'm assuming whatever is in place right now should be easily accessible and I would imagine very easy to, to hand out, correct?
Yeah, I think we've already, we've seen that in, in what's already on the website in terms of the meal distribution.
Okay. So again, to be clear and to clarify, I'm looking specifically for how we're reaching families who have barriers to get to the sites.
Yeah. But is it, it's, I guess my question is, can somebody come and can we have a conversation about that without asking them to come with a five-page handout? Is that okay?
Um, I, well, I'm asking for what is, what we need to see. I'm asking for what is ever out there is necessary to see. I'm asking to see what is in place and what is out there.
So, so you're okay with just us getting an attachment that, that as, as a memo that was sent out to people that, rather than having a, a handout that's crafted just for the board? So in other words, we could get three different memos that would vary quickly, potentially. I mean, I don't know what's out there. There might be three different memos, four different memos out there that have been, that have been used to communicate with each other. And that could be our handout, what's already been prepared, rather than preparing something brand new. If, if it covers what we needed to cover.
I'm looking for whatever we can have on an agenda that can be basically shared with the public of what we're doing to, to reach families who have barriers to get to the food, food distribution sites.
Yes, if that already exists, then don't make a new thing.
Right.
If something new has to be made to summarize it, make it a very short, additional thing.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is asking for a, I don't need a five-page handout. That's of clarity of what we're doing, why we're doing it, what the plan is moving forward, and that's it.
Okay.
Yeah. I think this is a very important current reality to take a look at, whatever that looks like.
Right. And I think I have some ideas as to how we can share this out. And there are a variety of groups looking and doing this work. So we'll just bring that forward. And I think it's an important discussion and the more public it becomes, the better so that we understand if we're missing needs in places and spaces as well. That's why it's important to bring it forward. If we are, if there are better ways that we're not, you know, as public listens to it as well. So we want to, and I, and I would agree, we want to provide as many meals as we need to, to make sure our students and families are, are, their physical, social, emotional wellbeing are taken care of during this school closure.
I would also add that when we have this information out there, that they're able to, people are wanting to help, right? So they're able to see, physically see what we're doing, what we're looking at, what we're interested in possibly expanding on so that they know themselves. You know, this, this encourages, I would believe this would encourage participation, more participation community-wide.
Yep. Thank you. And then I, I would, I'm interested in knowing, and it again, doesn't have to be a handout, but I know I talked to Vicky earlier today. I've, I've read some about the challenges of satisfying the IDEA requirements for special education students during this time. And I would be interested in just having a conversation about what we're doing. I know we're doing a lot already. And just, and again, I think it's important for the public to know that, that, that this is something that's, that's being worked on by, by our special education department and pupil services.
Would, just as a clarification, just in terms of timing of this, we may be able to do the food program sooner than later. The idea, can that come on April 27th? Just from a timing, or are you thinking May? Or what, what's your timeline on this? I just, people are, again, it kind of goes back to the food security is one piece. The staff is working forward with IEPs and things. I don't know what their capacity is right now as they try to do all their work. So if, if, if we can have some time, I don't know, Vicky, where you're at with that. So maybe I'll just leave that and you can help inform what that looks like after you speak with Claudia.
Yeah, I was mainly just looking for just a very high-level overview of the work that's being done.
That sounds good.
Some of the, doesn't have to be everything, obviously, we're, it's a work in progress. But some of the challenges that we've met and how they're being met, just, just kind of examples of that. I'm not looking for the whole special education, you know, virtual learning plan. But I think it would be nice to have something on the 13th. And I, I could see Vicky just giving us that, that overview.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for the clarification.
As long as Vicky's okay with it.
She's nodding, I can see.
Yeah, I see her nodding.
All right. Anything else?
I just have a, a quick question. Is it possible that this is Katie's last board meeting?
No.
No.
I'm back on the 13th.
While we were sitting here, the Supreme Court overturned the April 13th deadline. So all ballots have to be accepted by the 7th. Does that impact that?
No. Are you serious?
If you, if you haven't turned in your absentee ballot yet, then it's too late.
I think you can turn it in tomorrow.
Tomorrow, right, but you can't.
They overturned that? Wow.
So I don't, I didn't know if that impacted things, but I, I wanted.
No, because even still, it would be the, it would be on or after the third Monday that the positions would change. So either way, the 13th would have been with current board.
Okay. So that doesn't impact Katie.
No, I will be back to haunt you next week.
Not that I'm counting down the days or anything.
No, 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 I understand. Wow, I can't believe they did that. Oh.
Oh my God.
Think of, think of all the hours of work that city employees did to get those absentee ballots out. And if you haven't received it, and tomorrow,
You have to go in person.
You, you're, you're screwed. It's over.
Go in person.
You have to show up, yeah.
Yeah, or you have to, you have to do it in person, which is what everyone was trying to avoid.
Are we, are we off our agenda? Are we talking about something? Are we talking about?
I don't know.
I was just going to unmute myself. Yes, please. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay, then motion to adjourn. Go ahead, you do. Second. All in favor? Aye. opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
Aye, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.